The main room is still muted.
Did we miss on the recording then?
Yeah, probably.
All right, start over. Welcome to the June 7th, 2023 meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino, I'm the season's chair, reside in District Two, and we'll start our introductions down here in the boardroom.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
Evan Pusinger, District One.
Derek Day, District One.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Helen Wheatley, District One.
Mary Halverson, District Two.
Great, thank you very much, and I don't believe that we have any other commissioners online. With that, I hope everybody had an opportunity to look over the agenda. And I do want to make one addition to it during item number eight, good of the order, we are going to discuss the subcommittee findings. And then also, we have a calendar update that I'll go through at that time. But other than that, I would entertain the motion.
You to accept the agenda with the changes as noted?
The amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the amended agenda. With that, I'll call for the vote. The agenda, the amended agenda has been accepted. With that, I hope everybody has had an opportunity to look over the meeting minutes from our May 17th, 2023 meeting. And if so, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio of the official meeting record for May 17th, 2023.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I just have one little comment. I'm not sure if on, well, on page four, line one, it says Commissioner Wheatley had a question about horse manure. If I did, I apologize. I'm sure I meant something else other than just horse manure. I think it was, I think the question was actually just about, I was asking whether there had been changes in, like the, it was about the complaints.
Yeah, I think it was complaints related to horse manure management.
Manure management. But yeah, just, just so that people know, I don't have a horse manure.
Do you need a formal change in minutes?
No, it's okay.
It's been moved and seconded, I call for the vote.
Hi.
I'm staying, I'm not present.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. All right, the meeting minutes from May 17th, 2023 have been accepted and the audio as the official meeting record. With that, has everybody had a chance to look over the May 22nd meeting minutes? With our, from our joint session with the Yon Planning Commission, and if so, I'd entertain a motion.
To approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio of the official meeting as a, as the official meeting record for 22 May, 2023.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion on these meeting minutes? It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of May 22nd, 22, 2023 and accept the audio as the official meeting record. With that, we'll call for the vote.
Hi.
I'm staying.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Those meeting minutes are accepted, thank you very much. With that, we'll now move on to the public or public testimony portion of our meeting. And we will start here in the boardroom with anybody that might be interested in addressing the Planning Commission. If you please identify yourself and what part of the county you're from, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Lynn Chitzu, and I am from Olympia and from Friends of Trees. Overall, I have appreciation for this draft before you and the number of ways it attempts to protect trees, especially in the second half. However, one thing in the draft which I am uncomfortable with is going from the current requirement to keep 65% of trees when cutting to now allowing for all but 20% to be cut. The LiDAR analysis the county did shows 97% of county trees are outside of the tri-cities. Therefore, allowing all those trees to be cut would be a disaster. The provision for a development plan to be put in with the conversion permit is some help as well as the indefinite wording that the largest tree should be protected when possible. The later definition of a legacy tree, one 125 inches in circumference, is so large as to be a protection of virtually no trees. Tumwater is on track to protect trees over 24 inches DBH and calling them exceptional or landmark trees. We would hope for exceptional trees to be protected in submitted tree plans with the exception of when buildings cannot otherwise be cited. The TCMP calls for urban density and the avoidance of urban sprawl to achieve many of its goals. This proposal makes it easier to clear and build in the county than in the cities or the UGA, which would seem to me to encourage the opposite of the TMCP goals. Also, additional tree planting was originally intended to create 10% of the plan's carbon reductions. That much planning has since been found to not be feasible. However, in the TCMP white paper on trees, it was noted that significant cutting would completely undermine the goals of the plan. That is why the commissioners originally asked for and prioritized this issue. Lacy has a tree canopy goal of 28%, its current percent. Tumwater varies by zone type, but is basically 35%. So it makes no sense to me for the rural area of the county where people want to live in nature, not a city, to be more devoid of trees. I do realize it will not all be cut immediately, but any floor represents where you can wind up over time. So please, at a minimum, raise it to 35%. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nobody else is in the boardroom, is there anybody online that would like to address the Planning Commission? And, all right, we, we do have some rules for our online guests. Those participating via Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option to address the Planning Commission. You'll be promoted to panelists when it's your turn to speak and be seen. Please be, to be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure to also choose star six to unmute yourself. A three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help track the time. And with that, our first person would be Julie, if you'd like to address the Planning Commission. You'll have to unmute yourself, Julie.
Hello, my name is Julie Ratner, I'm in Olympia, Washington, and I just have a few statements of appreciation. I'm really glad that this county ordinance has protections for larger trees. I think that's really essential for our community's well-being and health. I'm really hoping that you'll put in some way of enforcing these with few exceptions when people put in development plans. I'd appreciate if you limit the percentage of clearing where new development is happening. It seems as if you could do even more to limit clearing and still allow for development. To start looking at balancing and offsetting some of that carbon sequestration that larger trees afford us. And lastly, as Lynn shared, it could be really, really helpful to start standardizing how we talk about large trees and call them exceptional. It seems as if there's a lot of controversy about how we, what terms we use, legacy, mature, old growth, exceptional, significant. So if we can start standardizing, especially in these county documents, I think it would be helpful for all of our future dialogues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Esther. Esther, you're still muted.
Yeah, hi. I wanted to concur with the comments that Lynn Fitch you made in terms of this particular ordinance. I'm informed about this topic because last summer, there was a clear cut allowed at Cooper Crest in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It was a critical area, it was home to endangered salmon. And mud minnow, it's at severe risk of flooding. And the cut that DNR allowed there was done without any notice to, to people and ignored the Green Cove Comprehensive Plan that specifically said that the major risks were soil erosion and flooding. And that the, what should be done in 1998, when the comp plan was written, was that they should increase the tree canopy. And instead, DNR permitted this as a class three forest practice application, when it clearly should have been class four because there are so many critical areas on, in that, in that spot. It's a sensitive aquifer recharge area. And, you know, the county's spending $8 million to remove the fish barriers further downstream from there. So, you know, so in response to that, Karen Fraser tried to get passed into the legislature this year, a, a bill that would require jurisdictions to notify DNR that they want to be notified of any forest practice applications in their jurisdiction and to require jurisdictions to notify adjacent and nearby property owners. And to, also to, that the county should advise DNR of their relevant ordinances and adopted plans, including those promoting or regulating urban forestry management. And most important, require DNR to comply with all the local ordinances and adopted plans. I'm not sure what the relationship of this is to what's going to happen in the legislature, but I would encourage the county to make as protective ordinance as possible to protect our last remaining trees. In this, we know from the League of Women Voters water study that there's serious problems with the aquifers, the groundwater is running lower, and we're projecting more population, and so the, the ecosystem services of trees are even more important now. And we can't allow just development just to completely subsume the public interest. So I appreciate you doing, you know, whatever you can to protect our, our remaining tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. Up next, we have Mary Ann Tompkins.
All right, hello, I want to talk about the modifications to the conversion option, the harvest plans, which everything others have been talking about here. Volume of trees allowed to harvest is proposed to increase to 80% of area, and the requirement for a forester to prepare the application is removed. So that seems like we're going backwards, we really shouldn't be increasing the area harvested, we should be decreasing, and a forester needs to prepare the application. I want to address the fact that infrastructure costs rise when trees are removed. Stormwater and drinking water is impacted, and, and that costs the county. We don't seem to really have our heads wrapped around the fact that the water is a finite resource. There's, there's areas that are struggling, and, you know, it's even in Eastern Washington, but we, Colorado State University recently did a research study, and they, only 2.5% of Earth's water is freshwater, and it's the kind we live on, and nearly all of that is underground. So we, we have to have our forests and trees to filter the groundwater. I live on a well, and I'm sorry, I didn't tell you, I'm in Olympia, I'm in unincorporated Thurston County. A friend of mine had a development go in their neighborhood, and it was not in Thurston, but the neighbors surrounding this development, now they clear cut, had their wells all dry. They all shared the same aquifer as wells do. So we can't keep throwing money to fix our error, errors, we really need to be proactive. You know, there's one more thing, there's another program that we've paid for to fix a problem that we've created. It's House Bill 1168, it's small landowner assistance to reforest, it is through DNR. And it's due to the fact of all the wildfires. It concerns long-term forest health and trying to get these forests back. And they're impacted by insects, disease, the wildfire, and climate change, you can call it weather, whatever you want to call it. But foresters will tell you that the larger legacy trees, these have the best chance of surviving wildfires. So we'll continue to pay the cost if we, if we continue removing them. So it's just a matter of time when these wildfires will start to hit other areas that haven't been impacted in Western Washington. So I know there's this belief that we should all be able to do what we want to do with, on our property, but we really need to think about what happens when that negatively, negatively impacts the health of your community and your neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tompkins. Up next, we have Lee Reiner. Lee, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you, um, I appreciate being able to speak about the modifications to conversion option harvest plan tonight for the Thurston County Planning Commission. My name is Lee Reiner, and I live here in the Thurston County for the last 40 years. I agree with Mary Ann, I think she brought up a very good point just a moment ago. I've had friends around us, living here on the west side of Olympia, that wanted to be able to log their property. They had, they have eight acres, and there are a lot of big trees there. And the draft of this modification, conversion, harvest plan, talks about removing the requirement for a forester to prepare the application. I don't know, I think it's very important that we bring in a forester. I know that my husband and I had to bring in a forester when we had some trees removed on our property. And the forester knew about the, the types of trees that were helping coverage of the property. And he was very, very knowledgeable, and we learned a lot from him, and I think it's, it's good to have a forester involved in this, I really, really do. I think most people are not educated as to all the disparities regarding forestry and forest lands. So also, the volume of trees allowed for harvest currently is proposed to increase to 80% of the area. I do not agree with that, I think 80% of tree removal on any one parcel is, I think we should look at parcel by parcel at the very least. 80% seems overdoing it. I agree with Mary Ann, and she talked about, we're talking about aquifers here, we're talking about critical areas. Here in Olympia, we have a lot of properties that do have swales, that do have springs, that do have a lot of legacy trees that are 60 or 80 years old, and these do affect the groundwater. And so I think that we have to talk about allowing the critical areas to be looked at very, very closely, and, and I don't think we should allow 80% of the area to be harvested. I know this proposal adds a minimum tree density requirements for single-family home development. I think that's very pertinent, I think we need at least a minimum tree density. It allows replanting or retention of significant trees, I think that's very important. I don't know the definition at this point of significant trees, but I think that's a very good point. I know that we talked about stormwater management systems at some point. And when you have a large-scale development coming in to remove these trees here in Thurston County, and you're talking about stormwater issues, it's ever more important to have trees associated with these storm ponds. I know that I, I like to walk, and I walk a lot, and so thank you for being able to speak tonight, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Renner. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the Planning Commission? Kristy. Kristy, you're up. Kristy, you're still muted.
Good evening, commissioners. I just want to put a ditto on, on everything that has been presented here this evening. Just a note, I live here in Thurston County in the Delphi Valley, and I live on forested land.
Oh, no. It's limited broadband. Oh, no, we haven't extended yet.
Yeah.
Kristy, I think, I think we missed you, but if you're not, if you're not able to come back, please do send an email in, we'd love to hear from you. Oh, wait, is she back?
Maybe, sometimes if you turn your visual off, it helps.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, so she's gone for the evening? So we might, we might get her back. Kristy, can you hear us? You're muted again.
There we go, I, I've taken off my video, so maybe it's a, a level of connection, can you hear me now, all right?
We can, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I'm not on camera there. But again, Kristy White, I live in the, the Delphi Valley here in Thurston County, and I live on forested land. To really emphasize what's presented by all of the fabulous presenters here this evening, you know, forest lands, particularly what has happened at the state level with DNR over the last year and the legislative sections, sessions, great progress has been made in preserving forests, legacy trees, how, whatever term you would like to use. And I think it's really critical that Thurston County, as the seat of our state government, and as a beautifully forested county, really can set the example and the mark to protect our forested lands. Lynn's comment earlier about, you know, at least a minimum of 35%, I'd like to see that even higher in terms of, of maintaining, you know, trees on a parcel before logging it. But I, I think there can be a middle ground that can be found so that we really can preserve this incredible emerald jewel of forest that we have here in Thurston County. And in regards to the code, I know that there's been discussion about, you know, regulations that have incentives rather than enforcement. I guess I would be a little bit cautionary there in terms of incentives as an accountant becomes a payment of a sunk cost and does not necessarily then allow for preservation. A developer will just pay the cost and it's sunk and it's gone. However, enforcement is a whole nother level, and I think it's important that enforcement regulations be seriously considered in, in our regulations. You know, clear definitions, that's always important to be able, that when people are seeking permits, that it's very clear. And I know that takes a lot of time and a lot of detail, but I think that's area that needs to be focused on. You know, we're losing so many trees now to the heat, and so I think it's even more important, you know, we're losing property hemlocks that are, you know, well over 200 feet tall that are dying because there's just not enough water for them. So I think that the issues of, of water preservation are even more important. So I thank you for all the work, I know this is not going to be another, this is going to be a more, another difficult regulation because there's so much at stake here, but appreciate all the time and efforts that you're putting into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristy. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the Planning Commission? B Norton, you're, you're up.
You see, can you guys, okay, there we go. Yeah, I just like to, I support all the prior comments that have gone on, and I would just like to emphasize that the use of mature trees in terms of our climate change impact is much bigger than, for instance, reforested or replanting trees. You take something, I mean, it takes 20, 40 years for these things to grow to full size, and once you get to that point, then they have the canopy effect, the shading, they suck up the stormwater, and they filter the water for drinking. And, and, you know, when you have these little saplings, they just don't have the same effect. So what I'm saying is that even if they replant the same number of trees, it's not going to have the same impact. So you need to really protect those older trees, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, with that, I believe that we've concluded public communication portion of our agenda. So we will now move on to the next port part, which is a new business item, a work session, the first one for docket item A25, the updated forest conversion ordinance, part of the Healthy Forests Project with our planner, Danny Dawes.
We're all ready to go, yay. Hello, everyone, I'm so glad to be here tonight and present to you some information about this update. And I just want to share a little bit about myself, I am a fairly new planner, it's the first time I've seen some of you. So great to be in the room with you and, and share ideas, and I come from a little bit of a different background, I am from Public Works directly at Thurston County, and I was in the Communications Department there. And before that, I was working at a conservation district for seven years, and did a lot of the program management there. And also was working with landowners, doing resource management on a one, one-to-one level with landowners. So I have a little bit more on-the-ground planning background. And I just really appreciate your time, I have been on a couple of state-level boards and local-level boards, and currently volunteer on my soccer club, and I know people a lot of time in, and I just saw the, the four packets that you approved, there are three packets of minutes, and plus the, the huge memo I sent, and I know that's not any, this is no news, this is every, every two weeks you meet, you have that much level of material to go through, and I just really appreciate the time you put in. So we're here to talk about holding forests, I am really excited to bring this to you because it's been on the docket since 2009 in one way, shape, form, or another, it hasn't been a prior in one way, shape, form, or another. It hasn't been a priority docket item since 2009. Thank goodness, because that would be way overdue. But it got moved up in priority and moved back in priority, just kind of depending on how the commissioners saw it, and really got moved up when we started looking at the climate, Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, and some of the data that came out of there. And then, as our commissioners were talking about, what do we do about this, some of the activity in our community with some of those tree cuts that were discussed by some of the folks who came tonight to share their testimony. Those all raised this level, raised this issue to a different level in the commissioners' eyes, and they asked us to look at this again and prioritize this. It's number seven on the docket, and I'd really love to get it, get it done. I'm sure you would, too. So if I could just move on to number two here, just talking about what we're going to look at tonight. I want to really focus on the scope and the timeline because, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I, this project could go a million ways, but we really, we want to take each chunk at a time and do the most good in the least amount of time, right? We want to make the biggest impact, and so that's part of what scoping things out is going to help us do. And then when we're going to have it ready so that we can have it on the ground for people to actually use. And then we want to really step into number two and review the forest practices. So a lot of what the comments that were brought will be clarified when we go through that because there are a number of forest practices, and it gets pretty confusing about which ones are applied when, and so I'll walk you through that. The tree protections today, what they look like, I'll give you an overview of that, the current tree protections, and then the proposed changes and what that entails. And then I'll leave it up to you to ask some questions. So the overall project involves four different phases. So we are only dealing with phase one right now. So phase one is really buttoning up those conversions. So conversions are any time we're having those trees cut and put into, that land put into a different use that's not compatible with forestry. So that would even disclude agriculture because agriculture is considered compatible with forestry through agro-forestry practices. So just thinking about it that way, that's what that language really means. So this first phase really talks only about those conversions. And it was clarified through the board that they would like us to add in a layer of tree protections as we're looking into this because our current code had them, had some of those pieces together, and then some other pieces were kind of sprinkled throughout the code. So we added a layer of tree protections that kind of fits alongside that current code piece. And then in the future, in phase four, we'll, phase three and phase four, we'll look at those a little bit more deeply. Phase two, sorry to go out of order. Sorry, phase two is really studying the tree canopy. So before we can do that work of how are, how healthy is our forest canopy, what are we going to do to grow it? What pieces need grown, what pieces don't need grown, all those questions, we really need to know what it looks like. And so we're, we've just wrapped up a study with Olympia to look at what our overall tree canopy across the whole county is. And it's using LiDAR imagery, and they did a data layer for us, and so we're going to take that data layer and do some analysis with our other county layers, and we're going to be able to present that to the board and move forward with that data. And so wrapping that into how we grow that tree canopy, and then the urban forests, and how those are affected, really coming at that from a database approach. So those things are in the works underway. Like I said, the layer is in our system, and the report, we're aiming for fall this year to have that report available to the board. Phase three, we're going to be working on that, you know, even alongside this a little bit because they have a little bit of similar aims, but then wrapping that up by summer 2024, next summer. And then the urban forests, there are, I think Tom Water is even doing its strength plan code updates right now. So walking alongside the cities as they're already doing their joint plan updates and adding these pieces in so we can be strategic that way. All right, so for this phase one, the timeline really is June to August, spending time with you, really doing this introduction, and then hopefully doing a public hearing in the next session, and then discussions and recommendations in the following session. So hopefully, three sessions will be able to give us enough time to really dig into this and for you to feel comfortable moving forward. With the recommendation, so after that, Board of County Commissioners, they're going to have their review and their hearing, August through December. And then hopefully, December through January, we'll have adoptions, we'll have it adopted. You've gone the wrong way. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
We're talking about adoption of phase one.
Just phase one. Yes, absolutely. Each piece is going to be very separate. Yep. So let me just make sure I've got notes. Here we go. Yes, perfect. And then catch up myself. I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but I think it is critical that we understand what the forest practices are and where they're applied. So bear with me for a second. It's going to get a bit technical. So class one is forestry for personal use. It's people cutting firewood on their property, taking out any downwood debris if they have a windstorm and they need that removed from their property. All of those things, they have a limit up to five thousand board feet, and that's a state, a state law. And anything under five thousand board feet, they are free to remove without any permits. Yes.
Five thousand board feet is about three trees.
Five thousand, yes. So it doesn't necessarily, it isn't a lot, and it is a lot. It can be up to two, two and a half truckloads, and it all depends on the volume of that tree. Yeah.
So how does this work with HOAs that have a rule that they can, within the HOA, that property owners can cut up to twenty percent of the trees on their property a year?
So HOAs that have that rule, I think, you know, that is something I have to look at because I don't know that, I think.
You can't supersede county or state regulations.
Thank you.
It's happening. I'm just letting you know.
Right.
Well, I would just, could I request that Dana go through her presentation so that we're sure?
Save questions for the end.
Yeah, save questions to the end.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. So that class one is that personal use piece, and it includes things like removing danger trees or hazardous trees, however that's defined. And then it, and there are stipulations under state law that have these definitions. It includes the Christmas tree harvesting. We have that very broadly in this, in this county. So it includes protection for that. Class two, class three, and class four special. I wanted to lump them together because for our intents and purposes of what we're allowed to do and not do, and what they mean to us, they're really similar. So really, forestry is protected under state law. We're not allowed to write any or adopt any regulations that would supersede the ability for those pieces to occur. We can write in forest management programs that would be voluntary but not regulation. So that is absolutely stipulated. So class two, class three, and class four are really the permits for harvest and replanting. Those are, for lack of a better term, plantation-style forestry, forestry permits, where they're all required to replant, and they're all required to have a moratorium. And the moratorium is because they're not developed, they're not for development. They're not to convert to another use. Okay? These three, these three classes come with another option called a conversion option harvest plan, which I'll get to. And that's what we had a lot of comments about. So it's really critical, but I have a whole slide on it. All right, so class four, class four general are the conversion forest practices. So that's cutting trees to put in development. Okay. We, the state authorized for counties to first do that in 1997, and we were standing in line, ready to do it. And we adopted our codes in 1997, and we're really interested in taking local control of those because they allow us to protect our critical areas, as you heard by the testimony. And they allow us to make sure we have local priorities established or included there. All right. Oh, my goodness. Up, Dana, up, not down. Okay. So taking one step aside for just a second, I wanted to look at the state permits versus the county permits and just tell you like why anyone would want to get one over the other because it's a pretty critical piece in terms of what landowners are feeling and the kind of pressure they might feel one way or another. So state forest cutting permits, those again are designed for forestry operations, except for that class four. As far as the only one that's really not designed for that, and class one that is the personal use. So the permits are at an extremely low cost, and they're very timely to get. There is a stipulation that they need to be completed within thirty days. So those are the two main reasons that people are motivated to get that permit. And they see, they don't necessarily see all the fine print, but they say, low cost, maybe, gosh, last day looked, it was a,
It's like a hundred and something.
Hundred and something dollars versus our twelve hundred dollar permit. And theirs is thirty days, and ours is a hundred and eighty. So we could just, I'm just laying out the landscape of what that decision looks like for these landowners. Not to, you know, vilify. Nobody's doing this to like, put on a hat and, you know, murder trees. They're just trying to meet their needs. They're looking at all the costs and benefits, and this is how they're meeting them. Okay, so the conditions of the state permits include reforestation. So when they're doing the forestry-type permits for the state, they are required to reforest within three years. The three-year window gives operators the time to make sure that they're not planting in a drought and wasting resources essentially on, on a season that is going to not bear those trees any success. And then they are subject to moratoriums.
I see you have it up there, but the local critical areas regulations.
Oh, yes, thank you. Really, 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 really critical, actually. But for the state forestry permits, they have their own critical areas protections. And people who are working under those state, those state permits are not required to adhere to critical areas, local critical areas ordinances.
And local ones are a lot more extensive.
A lot, very much.
The state, which are really focused on salmon protection rather than, you know, protection of other critical areas that might be identified at the local level.
Slopes, yeah. So the county, yes.
Just for clarification, so are you saying that, I know. I know, but I'm trying to understand. I really want clarification. I just want to be sure I understand. It's a point of clarification, all right? I want to be sure I understand because I don't understand. There may be other people who are watching who don't understand. Okay? So my question is, are you saying that the landowner has a choice, can make a choice between the state cutting permit or the county permit?
Not exactly.
Okay.
Okay, so here comes in the conversion option harvest plan, but again, that's just in a second because I want to make sure we understand the county, the county ones. And I think I did this kind of contrasty, so we get it. Really, the county permits for class four harvests are very expensive, take a lot of time. But we have local area, local critical area regulations need to be met with those. And we have some tree preservations in the North County UGA currently. So currently in the North County UGA, there are protections when we do that class four permit. All right, so to Pam's point, these two sets of permits are intended for different uses. The class two, three, and four, the four, excuse me, two, three, and four special are harvest permits where we're replanting, and that is cyclical harvest. The class fours from the county are only for conversion. So it wouldn't, if someone is trying to say, I wonder what permit to get, it's that they would misunderstand that they would get a moratorium or that they would be potentially trying to get out of a moratorium, getting the class two or class three permit. And I don't want to like to speak into other people's intentions because who knows? But, you know, we have heard testimony from landowners and people in the real estate market. They come in, their client wants to build on a property. It wasn't disclosed that they have a moratorium. So now they're stuck with a piece of property that was just cut three years ago and wasn't replanted, and they're stuck not being able to build for three years.
Yeah, you have situations essentially where someone will get a state permit, state forest practices permit, clear the site, then put it on the market.
Yeah.
And so they, you know, maybe there was a choice at some point, and the choice was for the state permit. However, the intention of whoever bought that property is now to use it for something else.
I do believe they can come back into the county and get a forest land conversion permit from us later.
So there are moratoriums. So the moratorium releases, which I know a lot of this background was shared last year, and it is a lot of information, but yeah, they're all interwoven. And, you know, the way that you could sort of make that shift or have that continue to be a choice is with the moratorium releases that a local authority might authorize, which I know Dana's going to get to.
Yeah. If I go the right way on the slides. Oh, my goodness. So conversion option harvest plans. So this is the big ticket. This is what we had a lot of testimony about. This allows someone to forego a moratorium. However, this plan needs to be approved by local authorities. So the local permitting office needs to approve it before it goes to DNR with the class two and class three permit. And they need to, the applicant needs to abide by local critical areas rules. So this permit really is the, is the stopgap measure between those folks that aren't quite sure what they want to do with their land. Maybe they, maybe they harvest using a two and three permit from the state, and then something happens in their life and they have to sell the land. You know, we don't want to, again, vilify or call into intention what people are thinking, but sometimes you just don't know what six years is going to do, and you're not quite sure what that looks like. And so if you're not sure, if you're planning on developing or not, this is the option. This is the way forward for you. So critical, we have this currently. This is not new. However, this is used like once in the last six years.
Wow.
Yes, this is a unknown, unheard of because it's not working.
It's completely voluntary.
It's completely voluntary, and the parameters, because they still have to pay an expensive fee, they still have to have along. So it's county, county permit plus state permit, like double permitting. So this is part of the reason why we dove deeper into this permit and made some adjustments. And we did that after we looked at what Pierce County and Clallam County both did in terms of adjusting this. They both have a couple of, and this is in the memo, if you want to have a peek, there's a, I mean, if you want to refer to it, there's the table in the appendix. So Pearson, Clallam, so it's page eight, if you want to look. But Pearson, Clallam both have abandoned this quite seriously. Pierce County allows cutting eight ninety percent of these types of, of these types of harvest permits. And that's because this is a class two and class three permit still. This is still a harvest permit. They are still required to replant. So those things are happening, and allowing them to harvest as per normal makes this permit a little bit more enticing to use. It makes it a little bit work better for people so that they actually use this permit and abide by our critical areas ordinances.
It's economically feasible.
It's, it is a little bit more trying to provide a way for people who, who don't fit into these two categories. So let me just make sure I've got all of my notes covered. Okay, so currently, just as you heard in the testimony, it's thirty-five percent of the area. Only thirty-five percent of the area may be harvested. However, if I'm thinking about this as a harvest permit, that's less than half of the, of the land, and I'm going to go with a. that's less than half of the of the land and I'm gonna go with a two and three and take my chances that I don't need a more, I don't need that conversion. All right. So. Yes, so this conversion option harvest plan. It's that the standards are are difficult enough that they require a harvest of, or a, pardon, excuse me, require a forester to do, not that it is explicitly stated that a har- that a forester is required. Does that make sense? Okay, so let me dial it back just a second. If you were to ask somebody to fill out an application and it denotes the tree species, the DBA, the diameter, base height, and the height of the tree. Normal Joe Q public citizen cannot or resident cannot do that. It's not appropriate. I mean, it wouldn't be it wouldn't be right of us to ask them to do that level of expertise without having a forester sign off on the fact that it's accurate. So by dialing back the requirements and using terms more like, we'll keep the, and so we, in the in the update, in the revision, we have used terms that are a little bit more general, a little bit more layman's so that any person could fill out that application and they wouldn't require the added expense of a forester coming in and signing off on those those changes. That is only that forester requirement is only for the criti- that change was only applied to the critical or conserve conversion option harvest plan. On the flip side, and I'm getting to changes, so I don't want to get to changes too quickly, guys. We're we're gonna get there. I'm just so excited. So keep that in mind. No forester for conversion option harvest plan designed that way. And then we'll we'll look at the changes in a minute. Okay. Did I do it? Yes. No, opposite. Oh, my goodness. I'm gonna get it tonight. So this is just giving you the overview of the permits over the last sixteen years. Really, we have sixty three of those class two and three permits. So you add the fifty five and the eight, take away the eight. The eight have only been the ones that have needed moratorium releases. Okay? And then only class four, only fifteen, oh, sorry, not fifteen total, excuse me, per year, average permits per year. So not total permits, this is per year permits. So we're getting, we have sixty three folks that come to us and say, you know, we're doing forestry practices and we're gonna replant. They go to the state for their permit and all that works great. I didn't even put conversion option harvest plans on here because it's less than one percent on average per year. And then class four is those conversions. So you have about fifteen permits per year across the entire county that are converting from using this permit, using this permit to convert from forestry to non-forestry. Okay, so the current policies. We have current policies in the comprehensive plan. So this kind of, we're kind of zooming back out a little bit. This isn't just code. This is all the things that navigate and show what we what we have for forestry regulations in the county. We have comprehensive comprehensive plan protecting the rural land and preserving the natural vegetation. And goals about that. We have improving the community resilience to climate change and those things and those kind of overarching things that we find in that in the comprehensive plan. And then we have a a goal that we're not reducing or we have no net loss of tree canopy. So those are the pieces that in the comprehensive plan that guide this work that we do. Then we have the development code. So this code seventeen twenty five is the piece of that that we're talking about right now, but we also have open space provisions. We have that include our landscaping and planting standards. Those are all in the zoning subdivision chapters. Then we have the tree retention and replanting in sensitive areas in the CAO. And then the oak woodlands are also protected in that critical areas. So we, other than this, we have other protections throughout our critical areas. So the drainage manual also has provisions for how we use trees when it comes to stormwater retention. And incentives for planting trees and best practice, best management practices and things like that. No, I don't want to keep us here all night, so I'm gonna try and speed it up a little bit, guys. Okay, forest conversion regulation. So this is current regulations. I broke this up into inside UGA, outside UGA, because that's what it currently looks like. So right now, inside UGA, we have a tree removal permits that have exemptions on square feet rather than board feet. And so it's not aligned and not the same language and it's difficult to to it's it's adds another layer of confusion. So that's one of the pieces. The concurrent development application is current is how we currently do it for inside North County UGAs. And then tree protections are required within the North County UGA. So those are already in place, not that's already there.
And those were the county's effort to have our regulations consistent with city regulations, correct? As part of our joint planning agreements?
Those actually started in nineteen ninety seven. Right when we had this code lifted in the first place and and got it adopted. When the state said we good, then we did that right away because I think I listed that the confer- I have some notes here. Oh, they, the, in the preamble, it said something to affect of to preserve, preserve like Jeremy said. Have the cities have a separate area and the UGAs are for that growth. And so it makes sense for them to, you know, fit the county or fit the city's other regulations. Okay. Okay, so outside the North County UGAs currently for the, and this is all class four permits. This is all the conversion permits. Outside the UGAs, we had that board feet removal. And we had that board feet removal was a time period of twelve months. So every twelve months, five thousand board feet can be harvested. Okay, and that's on properties greater than two acres in size. No development application was required with the class four permit, so you could just cut trees and you didn't have to develop. And you wouldn't have to show that you're doing anything with the land. And then no planting was also required. So you could cut five thousand board feet of trees, not develop and not replant. Can currently, sorry, not could, can currently.
That's less than two acres.
Yes. Oh, no, greater than two acres. Just like exempt or?
Yes, so.
Exempt for less than, yes, excuse me. Exempt for less than two acres. So these are properties greater than two acres.
Yeah, and so forest conversion permits are required if you're over that five thousand board feet or over two acres. However, there is no concurrent requirement for a development application. And no concurrent tree replanting.
So this is all about moratorium releases now because that's the next piece. So now that we, you know, have a good handle on what the class fours look like. Current moratorium releases, there are three different ways to do it. You can get a waiver if your lot is greater than twenty acres. And you have a home site limited to two acres. So those two criteria met. And so that's really, if you're only affecting ten percent of the parcel, that's what the waiver kind of trick, that was is what triggered triggered a waiver release rather or release with a waiver rather than the other ways. And then you had to do the reforestation in compliance with the state practice, state forest practices. So what that meant was you, even if you got that, you did the class two and class three, but you have a moratorium, have you reforested because it was required by the state? Okay, if you've reforested, then you're still, you're eligible for the waiver. So administrative release for moratorium looks like a single family home on less than twenty acres. Okay, and applicant didn't attempt to avoid any of the county forest conversion requirements. They're doing all the right things. And the critical areas were not damaged. Okay, then they can get the administrative release. The hearing examiner release is for other types of developments, so not single family homes. And the applicant did not attempt to change the conversions and did not attempt to get around conversions. I don't know how we how we enforce that or prove that, but then the hearing examiner release also has this critical area protection baked into it. So one of the pieces that's difficult with this is it's three different ways. And so it is more time consuming for us to manage three different processes and three different tracks than it would be to have one single track.
And just one note of clarification. The critical areas, if they were damaged, the moratorium release does allow for restoration of them, but as we all know, like once once it's been damaged, it's a lot harder to restore it to a state that would provide as much function and value.
Even planting, I mean, yeah. Pardon?
There's no evidence that it can be restored.
So what other counties do? I mentioned the chart and we talked about what Clallum and Pierce did with the conversion option harvest plan. But in general, this is some of the ideas that the county, other counties have done. They, I don't think another county in in the research that we did has different regulations for the inside and outside their UGAs. They're the same across the board. And so that's one of the pieces that we'd like to, would like to look at. The concurrent development applications are with these tree conversion permits across in a few other counties as well. And then a few other counties have protections for significant trees and they have requirements for replanting. Forest moratoriums, in some cases, some counties have no, no waivers at all. And some, you're only allowed to get a release from a moratorium if you're a critical function. And others, you're only allowed to get released from a moratorium if you're a single family home. So and then we're drastically restricting the home site size. So those are some of the ideas that came from other counties or what we looked into and what we saw they were doing. Okay, this map here just really kind of shows us what our permits have been looking like and then projects out, this is done by Thurston Regional Planning Council. And it, so if you see the green areas, those are all our long term forest pieces. And then the purple ones, those are the ones that are in the tax, the tax programs. So purple and green are have some level of protection already. They're already pretty, they're protected in some way. And those ones, I guess this map really shows it that those properties don't haven't had permits on them. They haven't had these conversions happen in those areas. But then the yellow and the, or the yellow and the orange parcels, I don't know if you see the yellow very well, but these parcels are the ones that are in the RR one five zones. And they're in rural Thurston County and they're the places that we have these conversion permits happening.
It it the areas at highest risk.
There we go.
Yeah, so the purple areas and the green areas are where you have some, some, as Dana mentioned, some layer protection to incentivize staying in that sort of forestry operation. The orange slash yellow is really those areas where, you know, there is still forest present. And but they're zoned for single family development. So it's just sort of to show the range of area in the county that could be coming in for forest conversion permits in the future. And so as you look at sort of the the impact of the update to the code, these are most likely the areas that would be impacted.
And so part of this story or part of this data really shows us that, you know, we have a lot of protected area and we have you know, we have area that's sprinkled out throughout the county that is at risk. But it isn't as much as we might have assumed, you know, or, you know, it isn't, it might not be as vast as we might think. Okay, so who to change is effect. It's part of the same idea. This, the changes that we're proposing really impact most single family homeowners or single family developers in the rural county. So the tree retention and replanting is really limited to them because of some of the other protections that we already have in the subdivision and zoning pieces. So we already have protections for commercial, multifamily and industrial because they're working on larger plots and they have to preserve tree tracks. So we have a piece of that already. We're looking at that and adopting it in phase three. That's one of the things that we're looking at later, but we have that now. So if we figure focus on the single family homes and how to really encourage protection of trees on those lands, single family home developments, excuse me, then that would, that would help. Then also the moratorium releases really impact those single family homes because a lot of them were listed as the different ways to get moratorium releases. Single family home developers, so people who want to develop a single family home, like a family who wants to develop, and then also the developers and development companies whose focus on single family homes. They are gonna, you know, as we put in tree regulations and they're the ones that have to, you know, fence around trees and make sure that they're permitting or getting the right permits and following the new regulations and it's another layer of regulations for them. And then multifamily, like I said, that commercial and industrial, they already have regulations currently. We're gonna dive into the regulations and make sure they're, they fit with the tree canopy data that we have a little later, phase three. Hey, we gathered data from a lot of different groups on this project and this is just really the partners. We talked to a lot of the interest groups as well, like Friends of Trees. We met with them and we met with Thurston Climate Action Team and discussed with them. We met with Farm Forestry Association, but these, this list here represents some of the the folks that are gonna be highest impact and also that have a little bit more of the technical data like WSU extension, Thurston County Conservation District that are working with these landowners possibly. Capital Land Trust and and those groups. So when we talked to the stakeholders, a few thing themes really rang true and and you heard them tonight. You heard them in the testimony, but you know, that that concern about enforcement on current regulations was really, you know, really rang true in almost all the groups. But we were also had concerns about the cost and the time taken for the permits. And how that, how that would impact affordable housing developments. And then larger trees prioritizing them because of the impacts that they have and the benefits, I should say, they have on the stormwater, on the lands of the landslides and erosion protection and of course, carbon capture. So and then the development should occur with tree protections in mind or tree conservation in mind and not separate from it. So, you know, it was a forester who said, how how am I able to advise a family who's trying to develop on a one acre lot when the best and biggest tree to protect is right in the middle? And they have no buffer area around that. It really needs to be before subdivision that these things come in so that we can actually write those subdivision lines with tree protections in mind. So that was part of the impetus. And then also other counties are have that same idea. It's not revolutionary. So here are the proposed changes. We have conversion requirements as separate from the moratorium releases and then I'll go a little bit deeper into each of these. So we really want to simplify the standards. As you heard, enforcement is a big thing. We want to make sure that we are writing code that is enforceable. We want to make sure that the language that we use is clear and easy to understand and that there is really as we put it into practice and people come into the BBC that they know what to expect. That's really important. That we have concurrent development applications. So that means if you're bringing in a tree conservation or sorry, excuse me, forest conversion forest conversion permit, you must have planned development alongside it. You can't, under these changes, you won't be able to just bring in that tree that forest conversion permit. They don't stand alone anymore after these changes. They must come with development. You have to have a plan in order to do that. Tree protections in place for significant trees and mature trees. So that's what what was discussed with the minimum tree density. So as you saw in the packet, we are going to have categories of trees. And that's part of what the testimony was discussing, having legacy trees versus ecologically significant trees versus any old tree versus saplings. So we use the term prevailing trees in the in the code for the trees that are there that don't fit the other categories. Saplings or anything that is in the forestry terms is called a two low. It's it's a reforest plantation seedling. So they're just the babies two years old. And so anything from that up to twenty four inches is that prevailing category. And then twenty four inches and higher is a separate category. That's the ecologically significant trees. And then above that forty inches and greater is the legacy trees. And I apologize that we had a couple of different numbers, I think Lynn mentioned, but she said a hundred and twenty centimeters. So we'll make sure that those numbers are clarified and accurate, but the intention was for forty inch diameter.
Diameter.
Diameter, yes. No, no, diameter. Did I say height? I'm so sorry. No, forty inch diameter. My goodness. Yes, yes, yes. We're always, we're always gonna measure in diameter and always using inches because that's industry standard. That makes sense. So, um, when we talk about those different categories, then. Someone would have to replant in a hundred tree ceilings. They're each worth one of the tree unit. Tree units per acre. Instead of having trees per acre, then that sapling would be the same value as. A forty inch diameter tree. And that's just not the case on the ground. Those forty inch diameter trees, those twenty four inch diameter trees are much more valuable. You know, that I think we have ample science to prove that. But when we look at. Um, trying to make those values add up, the value for the ceiling would be one. The value for those, um, ecologically significant trees would be, um, thirty, I believe. Thank you. So yes, thirty for those ecologically significant trees. We also have an uncommon tree category. Because we have some species that don't get very big, even though they're very old. So a couple of examples are, um, the Pacific yew, the madron. Those species just don't get very big. And so we can't consider them just on par with everything else. And then we have like uncommon being the Oregon white oak. It already has protections in it, but if we wrap it also into this code, it's a little bit. Doubly protected in a way. Um, so those, you know, if it has. A single Oregon white oak, it can still be protected rather than the stand that's protected in the critical areas ordinance. So those are predicted at thirty points per tree. And then the, um, legacy trees are fifty points per tree. So you can see that someone, you know, with a forty inch diameter tree. They might only need to keep two of those in an acre, but those trees are gonna do the work of two hundred saplings. So those numbers were arrived at using, um, tree density, tree stand density. Um, graphs from W S U and also, um, using the reforestation. Um, reforestation guidelines from D N R say that they have to have a hundred and ninety saplings on the ground. That are viable and that's our reforestation standards for those class two and class three permits. And if we didn't wanna make one hundred and ninety because the whole purpose of this, the whole purpose of having a. Forest conversion is that we're putting development somewhere, so we can't, we can't make it apples and apples, like they need to have some space to develop. We did make this, um, this requirement. An average over the entire parcel so that there's a lot of flexibility with where those trees are placed. So on five acres, they could have a lot of dense forest in one area and still have an open space and some space for their home site. Is this making sense? Yes. Okay. All right. So that's a big one. And then, um, requiring replanting for any, uh, protected trees or removed. Is part of, part of that, like the, this allows folks to be more flexible. So if they absolutely have to remove one of those large trees, they absolutely have to plant in way more saplings. So they have that flexibility because we have subdivisions that are already driven, drawn and divided. We have large trees that are right in the middle of the prime development spot on a parcel. And, but for that, you know, the, the parcel would be unbuildable. So we wanna limit that, limit making unbuildable parcels as much as possible. Um, all right, so this on top of, so, okay. Well, I'm sorry, conversion requirements, the big thing that I wanted to really help everyone understand is that we're gonna. Require a forester's signed off on tree conservation plan with those single family homes. So I wanted to really make that super clear because we want to recognize that that is different than the conversion option harvest plan. The, the forest conversion is the one where we're moving to development. And that will require a forester to say, yes, you have the right species. Because we are calling out certain species at certain, certain diameters, we need a forester to verify that information. We can't just. It would be difficult to, um, approve that otherwise. Also requiring a forester, yes, the cost of that forester professional services goes up. But the time taken in our office, because we are not foresters, goes down, hopefully for review. That's yet to be seen because we don't know, we don't know the whole process yet or, you know, hammering that out, but. Um, and it will take some time before we see how much review time is needed. And we're under a fee study right now to, to look at the current review and what's, what's required there, so. All right, so that's a big contrast between the conversion option harvest plan and these forest conversion, uh, forest conversion permits. So going into the conversion option harvest plan, the, the revisions I, I went over briefly before. But two of the main ones are allowing the language so that landowners can fill out that harvest plan. And submit it to us and then submit it to D N R. Okay, and, and so it has for us to review at the D N R level, at the state level, excuse me. And then the other thing about those conversion option harvest plans is allowing more area to be, um, to be harvested and less to be retained. Because those are for, those are for harvesting, the conversion, forest conversion are for development. Moratorium releases, instead of having three ways, we will limit it to one and we take the middle path. So instead of making moratoriums impossible to get out of or very costly, not impossible, excuse me. Very costly and time consuming with a hearing examiner, because we have landowners that are still gonna be on the same issue. Where they have a piece of land that has a moratorium and they were caught unaware, we do have to have a way forward for those folks. And we don't always want it to be as, um, as easy as a waiver. We wanna make sure that. We are making that a little bit. We're making it so that it's just more streamlined and a little easier to go through. Because it's one way and not three ways. Okay.
But one of the, with the path that you've chosen in the code, it essentially requires that reforestation piece.
Yes.
That you, you currently see with the waiver, that does not exist for the administrative release. And so it's sort of taking that piece from the waiver, but then applying it to sort of this new, more streamlined moratorium release.
Yes, thank you.
It can't be streamlined.
Well, that's just it. There wouldn't be a hearing examiner process, so we're removing that.
There are not many that goes as a parent examiner right now, because it's only for commercial, multifamily and industrial. Um, most of them fall in that middle category of being an administrative release. However, because they're in the middle category, there is no reforestation requirement. That only applies to the waiver.
Well, if that a hearing examiner permit required, you're talking about probably seven to eight thousand dollars of cost savings on that. Because that's about how much it costs to go to the hearing examiner, so.
Yeah, in about a year of review or up to a year.
And one of the emphasis that we heard too is just affordability of housing and the more we have these costs associated with permits for development, the more. Housing is not affordable. So plans for outgoing, um, ongoing outreach, I, um, we've. We have reviewed the website, revised the website to include the information and the docket pieces that are presented. The memos on there, code changes, um, the presentation is up there so people can review. I have probably four or five emails in my inbox. I was at, uh, training all day and just saw them before I came in. Haven't had too much of a chance to review, um, them in detail, but they will be presented at the next update and we'll be able to see those comments. We've had a couple of other, uh, emails coming in through the comment forums, so we are getting people that are interested in talking about this and have some comments. Um, we, um, sent links to anyone who's, we've been engaged with, that, that they could review the, the, um, proposed changes. That O M B has a link, all the stakeholders, I think that's, that's part of why Lynn is here today, because she was able to review the code in advance. And then, um, and of course, all the speakers online as well, thank you all for attending too. And then the formal, um, we gotta gather those formal public comments and then present them to you guys at the next meeting. But that's why it would be great to have that, um, public hearing next. If we can get through some of your bigger questions, because it really pulls all that public information together. And then we can have another session to, to unpack that all, so, um. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the plan going forward.
And Dana's downplaying how much engagement she has done on this. Um, she really has hit the ground in trying to reach as many stakeholders as possible. And she's quite popular because she keeps getting invited back to these meetings to provide updates. So, and I know that that will continue throughout the process.
Thank you. And then the next steps are, let's hammer down phase two, phase three and phase four and get this done. We wanna make sure that, like, really, the way I refer to this phase one is kind of putting, stopping the holes in the boat. You know, we, we wanna cork up those leaks and get the, the most impact with the smallest time possible and. And really get this first piece done. And then we can look at some of those other pieces, like the subdivisions and. Um, potential changes to how we do tree tracks and those kind of tree preservation pieces. That are aligned a little bit more with this idea. So phase three, forest canopy, oh, yes, sorry. That's phase three and then phase four, then we get to talk to the urban forestry. So we really, really wanna focus this piece on the rural, uh, forestry protections.
And the reason that phase four, I mean, it's, as Dana mentioned, it's, it's underway already with some of our north county city partners. But not getting ahead of that, like really trying to work in concert with the city of Tombwater. Because they just did this, you know, award-winning urban forestry management plan. Um, recognizing that Olympia is trying to get their planning effort underway. Lacey has a more recently adopted one. Um, the piece that was missing for the county is really this tree canopy study, like all the cities had tree canopy studies. But not necessarily updated ones for Olympia or us. So like, once we get that, then hopefully we will be alongside those north county. Partners with the joint code updates, which all come before the planning commission. Um, and the joint plans that have been approved contained, um, tree protection provisions. Um, for both Tombwater and Olympia.
That's the, yeah, and just, well, you guys know this way better than me, but I'm still choosing out the plan level versus the code level. So even though the plans have been approved, you know, we have the tree protection code pieces that, that really is encompassing that phase four.
Okay, well, are you ready for some questions then?
Bring them on.
We're gonna start down here with Commissioner Hanson. I know that he had some.
I, I had a question about, um, the, was it. Permit number one or whatever, um, and you said that that included the hazard trees. But if somebody has hazard trees, does the five thousand board feet limit apply as well? Or is there some way that if, if they had more than five thousand board feet of hazard trees, they could still take them all down?
Um, I believe so. I believe there isn't necessarily a limit with the hazard trees. Yeah. Yeah, so, and that is really, I mean, you wouldn't even need to come to the county for permission to take out a hazard tree. It is stated that you go ahead and take that out and then, yeah.
Unless you're at a C A O or shoreline.
Yeah, there are, there are, like, if it's a, oh, um, there are. Thank you. Clarification.
Well, I, I think of like, in wetlands where you get like cottonwoods that grow up and they get to a certain size, they're just gonna fall over on your house. Um, and so, people, I wanna make sure that people are able to take those kinds of trees out.
Right.
Um, without a whole lot of hassle.
Another piece that was brought up by the planning commission last August was the wildfire protections around homes. And so we did allow for within that, um, tree preservation piece, the seventeen twenty seven new chapter. That like if people, you know, as people develop that conservation plan, that they should consider. Future developments and how they interact, uh, with regard to wildfire and hazard trees specifically.
Well, the county will still be required to, um, implement the wildland urban interface stand requirements in the state of Washington through our building codes.
And there are tree, there are stipulations about clearing so much out of your, really, I think the, the first level is up to thirty feet. With a mature tree and I think they call out what a mature tree is and with regard to those standards, but a tree that would be more fire resistant. And then out fifty feet, um, and all these trees have to be limbed up and have their proper treatments so that they are fire resistant. And then out a hundred feet for, you know, basically open, open forest here.
To point about the hazard trees, although chapter seventeen twenty five might not be the chapter that applies in a hazard tree situation. It is something that could be looked at in phase three alongside things like protection of oak woodlands in the critical areas ordinance. Also looking at things like removal of hazard trees and it has been brought up by current planning staff. And there's kind of a running list of the other tree provisions that are sprinkled throughout the code that might come into play.
Pressure testing, did you have any questions? Do you want to start?
Thanks. Um, so you mentioned that the tree canopy study has been taking place for. Approximately four seasons. Um, do we have any estimates so far as to what we're at?
We haven't had a chance. We got the data in on, um, June third. And so they're literally loading it up into G I S. And I haven't gotten a okay that we are, are, have access to the data yet.
Did you mention that Lacey's currently at twenty eight and Tombwater at thirty five?
Did I mention within the code?
Oh, no, um, I think that was a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, that was one of the reasons that, um, the county went after that grant with the city of Olympia is we don't, there is no baseline. Um, in terms of what the canopy coverage is. There are estimates, but it's a lot more difficult to calculate in the county. Because of the commercial forestry operations, so it's cyclical.
We have, yeah, we have this large.
She wants to follow up.
Can I just follow up on that? I, one of my big questions was, you know, um, NOAA has been doing Li D A R stuff with their coastal. You know, their coast atlas, whatever they call it. And according to them. Uh, basically between, I've heard, yeah, twenty. Nineteen ninety two and twenty sixteen Thurston County lost eleven percent of its tree canopy, according to their info.
So it's the commercial forestry operations that usually skew that, which is one of the reasons that we wanted. A data layer that we can interface with where we have all of those designated forest lands, things that are in commercial timber use. Um, because depending on the years you pick, if you don't exclude the commercial forestry operations, you can show big swings. Did, I don't know if they.
Yeah, so, so my question is, I mean, once you, once you've done this study. I mean, I guess your use of the term baseline makes me a little nervous.
Oh, like.
I, I, yeah, you will, you will be, will you be, once you have sort of the, the map of the. Property types of concern, are you gonna try to, to move it back so that you get a sense of change over time? Especially since this, what was it, nineteen ninety seven that it first went into effect? Because of course for us as planning commissioners, we're always interested in sort of the gap analysis. Like the gap between what you want to accomplish and what you are accomplishing with the language that you have. And so it, it would be helpful to us to know what the loss or gain was in the areas of concern for this. Um, and would that be possible to do, it, I guess it's gonna be too late, because that's phase two and this is phase one, but.
Well, right, and I think that, um, with regard to this update, that, that's why we were focusing on the urban. Or sorry, the rural landscape and we have, um. You know, those, those pieces of data coming in, but that's really why we're limited to the single family homes. Because we don't really have the data to really extend it too much to those other pieces. And, but that's okay. Tasha has.
Yeah, in terms of the, the data though, I think the intention is to try to look at change over time. Maybe not back to ninety six, because, yeah, because the Li D A R data that we're using is like the most recent that we have.
Twenty twenty two flight.
And it's gonna be really exciting because it's not just looking at canopy coverage. They're also gonna be able to determine type of forest coverage, height of trees.
Yes.
And so we'll have so much more information than we currently have.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess, I was just, I was just trying to make the point. I'm a little nervous about the use of the term baseline though.
Yeah, I think we're looking at a, it's more of a point in time that we're looking at with that.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, and then the reason I use baseline is because, um, the, the grant asked for, um, an analysis that could be replicable. So that base, it's almost like a baseline of our methodology for how we track it moving forward. Rather than like, this is the only point in time we're gonna look at. It's more like, okay, it is a very robust analysis. And we are getting that methodology pulled and, and then hoping to replicate it at certain time periods without having to get a grant for a consultant to do it. And we are getting that methodology pulled and, and then hoping to replicate it at certain time periods without having to get a grant for a consultant to do it. And that is extremely exciting. So more to come. But yeah, as Dana said, we just.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Yeah, I do want to get to Commissioner Hesse's other question.
On page ten of twenty, item A at the top of the page, be similar, is that intended to be in scale?
Um, I'm not.
I think so.
It makes sense.
Then immediately after that, and the timber cruise, I did not, I don't know what that means.
It's a survey.
No, that's okay. It should be defined.
Within item C, wind throw, I found wind firm.
Would you like me to answer, sir? Okay, so a timber cruise is an analysis of the forest inventory. And it's done on, it's done on a survey basis, so just by plots rather than an entire coverage. And then wind throw is the trees that are downed with wind activity. So wind throw would cause them to.
Following down that page, section A one, is that intended to be the department or the director?
So number one, A one? Oh, it is intended to be the department, as a whole, but if we need to, we need to establish that it's a director, just to make it more clear that is possible. I'm just trying to see if there was a reason that we didn't have it as one or the other.
I know that.
I think it was meant to be inclusive.
Going ahead to part B, number six, it talks about the director may approve an amendment. Know this commission has shown some concern about directors making decisions. Let's point that out. A lot of this administrative authority is at the director's hands.
That's a pretty cool, pretty typical code construction in our code. The director is usually charged with executing the code on behalf of the board of county commissioners in the county. And they're usually the approval authority in the department. So it's pretty typical to have that. And then it's usually director and that's defined as including designees, which would be the permitting folks in the permitting center.
Yeah, and I don't think this commission has concerns about that so much as things like exemptions and unilateral decision making. A question about the, two other topics which may be appropriate for part two or three. Let's do with the topic of controlled burns. I don't hear that mentioned anywhere near. And it's becoming more recently in practice as a good forestry practice. I don't know whether the sizes of the lots we're dealing with would make it applicable. But it's worth at least looking at.
Right, and it is a forest practice that can be employed using E and R regulations, in terms of those forest cycles and managing the understory. So it is, it is that someone could get a class two and class three permit for a burn, I believe. But I can double check that. I know that there are, I believe slash and burn is, might even be included in class one. But I have to double check my notes.
Okay, and then another thing that might be a recommendation for improvement in the longer term. I'll just quickly tell a story that my brother, I have two brothers and they both live in the, here in Thurston County, one of them in Olympia, one of them in the county, off of South Bay Road. And one off of South Bay Road, both has a lot of trees on his property and a lot of neighboring lots that are considering development that are heavily treed. And they've had quite an experience over the last few years of, people coming to them saying, hey, sell us your trees. They'll make a fortune. You'll make a lot of money. Here's approximately, you'll get like twenty thousand dollars for your five acres of trees if we cut down one third of them, or whatnot. And they're getting a lot of misinformation. They will then experience, then they'll say, well, that sounds great, twenty thousand dollars, sign me up. And they sign up and they then get told, well, we didn't tell you that, you're going to have to pay for the trucks to haul them away. We didn't tell you, you're going to have to pay for this and that. We didn't tell you, we're going to have to pay for stump removal. We didn't tell you that after stump removal, you're going to be left with this much deep of chewed up roots that are going to be just left on your property. And some of them now have county complaints against them, saying you have to clean up your property because you've got this deep of wood bark or whatever leftovers. Yeah, not to mention the taxes, the, the taxes on the whole amount, not the profit that they got. And so there's a large number of information pieces that it seems to me we can put together into a public information piece, for people that might be considering this, or even just on the website to share, here's what you might expect. Uh, here's how it usually works out in terms of numbers and all the different things you need to take into consideration.
One of the really amazing things that we have access to is a conservation district, and they just want a grant to help people with these kind of things. So it is absolutely, you know, when we get this underway and we have, we can point this, point people to this new code, then they'll be working with conservation districts and making forest management plans. And then get access to that information as well from a face-to-face person who can go to their property and tell them all the things. You know, it might be a little bit out of our purview to have like a huge campaign about forests. Those type, type of forest things, just depending, like if people are doing the conversions, absolutely, that's well within our, our purview, to like lay out what that looks like and what the rules are exactly. We have a couple of examples of what Pierce sends out to their constituents. They're really like beautiful, very, very, easy to look at flyers that are very clear and have a lot of information, like an infographic. So it could be, hopefully we have the funding to report with something like that, but you're right, there's a ton of misinformation. And we just really want to encourage people to use those conservation technical service providers as, as they walk through those things. And, and our code is, and we've got information from the conservation district too, that our code right now is in such bad shape that, they have to send people to us to, to tell about our code. They can't even interpret it. They can't even help people alongside it because it, it is quite, quite challenging.
Last item I have is on the topic of enforcement and a couple of things. One, I just have noticed, I've seen a lot of different properties, but driving past numerous cases, the recently cleared lot on Slater Kinney in about twenty, twentieth or seventeenth or whatever. I've got photographs if you want to see it, but it's, it's clearly newly cleared for single-family home development. And it's right on the other side of the trail from another huge cleared, fully cleared, probably fifty home, lot. And these things have next to no retained trees. I mean, we're talking, if anything, five trees in a line along the tree line, I mean, along the road line. Five trees in a line along the trail line. And I'm trying to understand how, what are our current rules or lack of rules, that get us to this point that this is so common in the practice of just massive clear cutting? And is this going to do anything to help that? And then second, I've lived in Washington most of my life, but I've moved around a few times. And when I came back to Thurston County about ten years ago, just within months of my arriving and moving into the fine city of Lacey, Tree City, USA, the Woodland Park area, which is so-called hub or downtown of Lacey, it's a giant, multiple buildings that are six, eight stories tall. And all of a sudden, one day, all of the trees were down. I mean, we're talking hundred-year-old trees that are multiple hundred feet high, and all of them came down magically overnight. And it turned out the developer made a mistake. They didn't realize that they had a tree plan for that development and that they just accidentally cut them all down.
And I believe that's Lacey's jurisdiction too. The county has got a jurisdiction there.
I agree, but my point is, everything that was mentioned as to how that happened had to do with, well, there's next to no enforcement. The cost to the developer is next to nothing. Cost them, maybe they paid a hundred dollar fine or something like that. Well, the tree value alone, the lumber value alone far exceeds that. So it's not even, it's not a disincentive, it's an actual incentive. And so I'm concerned when I hear these phrases about lack of enforcement and that maybe we want to consider incentives, rather than enforcement. I'll be thrilled if I hear an actual incentive that would be worthwhile to the community and would properly incentivize, the parties involved, but I haven't yet heard an incentive that fits that description. So I think we need to take that very seriously. If, you, you mentioned the public comment was heavy on the topic of enforcement. So it's going to be my greatest concern as well.
Yeah, a question, so if I understand correctly, for the conservation option harvest plan, that is going to require a development plan moving forward, is that?
Conservation option harvest plan? Does not, sorry, conversion option harvest plan does not require development. So that is for folks that don't know whether they're developing or not, so we don't have a site plan, we don't have development. That's for folks that are, they, they would normally get that class two or class three. Once they know they're developing, then they would have the development permit. And when they're developing, the development permit would come alongside that tree conservation plan. So they would have to look at what that tree conservation plan shows them where the trees are and that, that minimum tree density that they need to retain. Did I answer your question?
You did.
So at the time of the application of the conversion option harvest plan, there's no development plan required. However, at which point they are actually going to come into convert, there would be a development plan required that has to comply with the minimum tree density requirements in seventeen twenty-seven.
And the conversion point is when they come in for a single-family home on the property?
Yes.
And not when they cut the trees.
The, the big benefit to them is that there isn't moratorium placed on the property if they get a conversion option harvest plan. Which there is if they only go with a class two or class three or class four special.
And the benefit to us is that they have to abide by those critical area rules that are local. So the cutting that people have been talking about on properties that have slopes and have critical areas that we recognize, but they might not at the state, that wouldn't be allowed.
Yeah, okay. And I think that the issue that I see here is there's a huge cart horse problem with stormwater management. And it's super common that somebody will, you know, on that, as Commissioner Hesse was talking about, they come in, they cut down as many trees as they can get their hands on. They've literally piled up all of the top, scraped off all the top soil and piled it up into mounds. It's not tarp either. And that precludes low-impact development, which all of the codes and enforceable documents are supposed to make the preferred and commonly used approach to stormwater management. And it's not happening. So something about these, the, the way that this development happens is, probably out of compliance with your NPDs permits. Like it's not meeting the Clean Water Act and just not getting there.
Talked to our hydrologist about some of those, some of those issues. What they described is some of the, some of the development strategies for the low-impact development, do, do allow for that because the low impact really focuses on the impact of flooding, not necessarily the impact to the environment. So as those standards are written, they're written to terraform for the most part. They're written to allow drainage, not to preserve.
That's not, that's not entirely correct. So I used to run the state's low-impact development training program. And so, yeah, I think.
Well, just a focus, sorry, if I could rephrase.
I, I think that, that is true, but you lose so much of your ability for onsite stormwater management when you do something like that. So if you, if you can come in and, you know, cut all the trees down, scrape all the top soil off, and then you can claim infeasibility, in ways that you can't, you shouldn't be able to.
So to your point, one of the pieces that we're hoping to, hoping to move on next is when we have the tree, tree canopy study finalized, and we move with, with that report to the board, it will come with action items. It will come with action items to, provide for further detailed goals in the comprehensive plan regarding forestry, and stormwater, hopefully an action plan to, look at the, I would say the, the economic value of trees on the landscape. So one of the counties that did a study recently was Snohomish, or sorry, the city of Snohomish. And they have already a methodology for saying how trees are valued in terms of their stormwater retention, and have that laid out. So it would not be a heavy lift for us to use their methodology and apply that in our county, and, and have a paper that says, this is how we're going to value these. And then we would have that to add to our, even our right-of-way in our own stormwater infrastructure, to say, this is how we're going to value trees on the landscape when it comes to designing these things. And I've had conversations with public works already, and they're, they're stormwater designers, and talking about, what does that look like? And so we're already in those topics because, you know, you're right, that stormwater is a critical piece of this.
I have a couple of hopefully easy ones. Do you, do you have a, an idea what the moratorium release or waivers cost now? And if there will be any changes in, if this update, when this update goes through?
I don't know what the cost now, I'm sorry. Do you have any, do you remember?
No, but I think someone over there is looking it up. I was just going to look it up on my phone.
Thank you. But the fee study is the one that will change those fees, so that won't necessarily be prescribed in here. Because all the administrative stuff is, is identified in, you know, say, this will be, like the administration chapter says, this is a type one registration, and it kind of points to that, that administrative code chapter.
Secondly, you said that one of our permits takes up to a hundred and eighty days to get through compared to the state taking thirty days. Is there any reason why it takes a hundred and eighty days to get through our process?
Probably because we don't have foresters and then those, that development, like most other developments, has to go through a few of other departments. I, I just watched a forester go through it. He was asking me, what, where is my permit? What's going on? And it was around the other departments, getting approval from Department of Health and this and that.
And, and there's also more than likely a critical areas review that goes along with it. Which is not happening.
I know that the department in general is trying to speed up everything, so hopefully.
Yes, that is definitely a priority.
So for, for a sign conversion permit fee, it currently, one thousand one hundred and three dollars, and those are split amongst two departments.
That's the fee itself, but not the moratorium.
No, that's not the release of moratorium.
That's a fee for what?
That's the fee for the permit for the class fours that are conversion permits.
Did you realize that Thurston County has one of the highest permit fee processing charges of any county in the state, to include King County?
So we're currently conducting a comprehensive fee study to take a look at all of our rates and charges. Do note that unlike many counties in Washington State, we are a hundred percent cost recovery on our permit fees. So that being the case, as our current state, we do have to try and recover the full cost of those fees when someone comes into the permit set.
Who sets that requirement on? Hundred percent cost.
Fees are set by the board of county commissioners. They were last set in, our last fee study was in two thousand eight. The last time the board of county commissioners approved a fee resolution, I believe, was around twenty twelve, and that's where they finally made that decision on that. And they included a cost accelerator in there. And that's one reason why we're doing our fee study right now, and we're hoping to have that concluded by the end of this year.
My point on fees is, a lot of people don't apply for permits because of the cost of fees, and they just go ahead and do it thinking that, well, if I do it and I get caught, then I'm going to pay a fine. And the fine is not going to be much more than the permit process, which takes a hundred and eighty days to do. I mean, seriously, that is what is happening. And that's why on the SMP, we talk so much about fees and ADPs, administrative versus hearings, because we want people to actually apply for these permits to do it the right way versus not applying, and not doing it the right way. That's, that was my point on fees.
One of the action plan items with that tree canopy study going forward is, you know, as we're looking at a program to help with forestry, you know, if we're targeting larger trees for climate mitigation, the folks that are doing those things should get it potentially. I mean, I don't want to say should, excuse me, we're looking at a potential. I mean, I don't want to say should, excuse me, we're looking at a potential rebate of their professional services and different things like that. Because if they're, say, if they are preserving those trees for the public benefit, then it is reasonable to provide.
Commissioner Simmons, do you have something?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank the previous commissioner, Dan Pesner, for bringing up the enforcement bit. That was a big deal for me. That was, that's an important thing for me. Because I, just like Commissioner Pesner was saying, I've heard stories about, oh, whoops, and the trees are gone, what do you do? So and and I just have a couple of clarification questions for you. Like each of these phases, is it the intent to have work session, public hearing, another work session or?
For most of them, I think that with the exception of the phase two, which is the tree canopy study, because that was the board approval to go forward with that, then that will go straight to the board.
But you will probably, you will end up seeing it because if it informs.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be one of the pieces.
And and you kind of mentioned, when you say residential dwellings, I, I guess like some pieces have me get a little confused. Are you talking about development or the single family home on a five acre plot?
Usually when we're talking about that, the single family home development on a five acre plot is what we're talking about. We're not talking about the subdivision type of like twenty homes on a half acre, not that.
Okay.
Yeah, those are under subdivisions.
Phase.
That'd be phase three.
Okay, thank you.
I want to be mindful of the clock, but we saw more questions go through, so go ahead, Commissioner Weely.
Well, I agree, I, you know, I know we have other important stuff to talk about. I just want to be, make sure I just understand this at a real fundamental level. So the conversion option harvest plan is for somebody who thinks they don't want to, they have, they have land that you could build a home on.
Yes.
But they don't think they want to do that, they just have the land.
Or sell.
Or sell.
For someone.
They just want to have some trees harvested to make some money off the trees.
And they will replant.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to understand the process. So, so they decide, I want to keep my options open, so I'm going to, I'm going to come to the county and I'm going to ask for this conversion options and harvest plan. So this is the part I'm a little unclear on. So they have, they have to submit a plan then?
Yes.
Okay, and and they do not have to have a forester help them develop the plan?
They don't have to, they can.
But they can, but in any event, they have to submit a plan. So at the county, somebody looks at the plan.
Yes.
Who's looking at the plan?
Our permit staff.
Okay, are they trained to be able to understand whether the plan is protective?
One of the goals of the language is to help them have enough guidance that it would be clear within the code.
We do actually have a staff that's currently trained in with trees, so.
Okay, but it's not anything at forester level. And, and where does the language, I remember seeing language about landscape architects.
Right, that is.
Are those people who could submit, are those people that they can use to submit the plan? Or does that landscape architect language apply to some other part of?
It applies to a different part. The landscape architect is similar to, similar credentialing to a professional forester.
Yeah.
And so they would be the folks that we, that we added that language of landscape, landscape architect with the, with the standard for the tree conservation plan that needs to be completed by them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But that's not specific to the conversion option harvest.
Until they, until the conversion office, option harvest. Decides to develop, then they would have to have that tree conservation plan that is signed off on by a forester.
Okay. So that's a whole other issue. I guess I would want to add that to my list of concerns we're talking about this evening because we're not only talking about conversion option harvest plan, but I agree with some of the commentary earlier. I'm a bit concerned about that. But anyway, getting back to the conversion option harvest plan and just helping me walk through it because I figure if I don't fully understand it, there's other folks who don't. Okay, so you submit, you submit your plan and somebody looks at it and says, okay. But all the plan has to do is show essentially, it's not about being protective, it looks to me like it's not about protecting the trees as tree, trees in the sense it would be if you were converting it.
Right.
It's just making sure that you're not going to impact the critical areas and shoreline areas, right?
It's, it's a different focus because those folks would be going in for a class two and class three where they would have zero percent retained with the state. Or I don't say zero, excuse me, they are required to leave seed trees. And I think it's two trees break or three trees break or something like that.
All right, and somehow you came up with the number of twenty percent. I would maybe like an explanation of how you came up with that particular.
So I arrived at twenty percent because of some of the other jurisdictions, especially Pierce County, because Pierce County is really analogous to us, but a little bit more urban. So they, they adopted their code in two thousand four, they've had it for a while. They've seen what the public has done with it and whether they have used it or not. And so it was a good case study to look at. So when I talked to their planner, they said, they put it at ninety, it's too high, I would lower it. And they recommended eighty. So that's part of the reason why we chose eighty. The other part is because of, when we look at, you know, the purpose of it, that land will be replanted. Now, there, there is, so really someone could do a class four.
Yeah.
And they could clear an entire five acre parcel and replant the whole thing under class four.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to protect any trees. So it is preservative in a different way.
Yeah, well, let me just, so let me just finish it because I don't want to take too much time, but just so that I've sort of walked through every step to make sure I understand what this is. Okay, so then you get your permit and then you do your cut of like eighty percent. So this is where the enforcement question comes in there because after that, nothing happens. Nobody comes out to look and see if you did it right, et cetera, until you reach a point where you decide you want to convert it and then there might be somebody coming out taking a look.
So how that's handled in the permitting department and whether they do site visits or not is at the purview of their director, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's not necessarily something that we require.
Oh, it must require, it's required in code.
Okay.
But our code enforcement is a complaint driven code enforcement process as they are commonly across the state, so.
Okay, and then so finally.
Our code enforcement staff do work diligently and do have a high case load, but they do work diligently and all complaints.
Okay, so let's say that you're somebody and you've watched them cut the eighty percent and you don't think they did it right and they didn't protect the critical areas, et cetera. So who, it says in appeals, is that, is that again, the, like, how do they? Maybe that's a different part that how, so let's say you, you're not happy. Do you have to have some kind of standing or can you be just anybody and say, I don't like the way they did that? And then what happens if they complain, there's an investigation? It's found that they did it wrong, then what happens?
So that maybe is. Sure, so anyone gets to complain. Anyone gets to complain except for staff, I believe, we're not. We know too much, maybe. Um, so we, and we want to develop a relationship of trust with the, with the residents, right? We can't be, we can't be whistleblowers if we want to have.
Okay, yeah.
That's the one piece, the other piece is there isn't a stipulation about how they have to, how they have to review that site. How they choose to review that site and what the planner decides and what they decide as an apartment about how to enforce that. Also, and then when you have, when they have a complaint, excuse me. So that's the site review piece that would come with the permit, was what I was speaking about before. But when they have a complaint, it goes to staff and staff do due diligence site investigation. And they go out to the site and they, they see what needs to be repaired. And I believe there is in the code, well, I think, okay, it is stipulated for moratoriums, but maybe we need a little bit more language for code violations of other pieces. But I believe there are fines for code violations there in the administrative code chapters. So maybe it's that fine section that needs beefing up.
Yeah, it's entitled twenty six.
Yeah, well, and I would say that those are great questions and I now have all of the code violations for the last fifteen years because of the ag zoning update. And so I think it would behoove Dana and the rest of the team to sort of look through those, see how many we received and then check with compliance staff to see what they do with those versus something like, you know, whole barn being used for being converted and bring that information back.
I can definitely do that.
But at least give you an example or a range of like, this is how these different cases.
Because that helps, that would help me, for example, think about Commissioner Pesner's point that you may actually be providing incentive rather than the dis.
Right.
What?
So, yeah, so that's all, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm not asking for answers now because we have the time constraints, but I just wanted to walk through the process and understand every step, so.
One, one thing really quick, though, in terms of some, like a condition that that this code helps get enforcement on is not allowing a moratorium release until the replanting has taken place.
Yes.
Which that falls under a state permit and they would be responsible for enforcing. They don't always have the opportunity to do that. And we're essentially going to say with this new code that you can't come in or request for that moratorium release unless that replanting has been taken care of, which is not a requirement now. So that is one, at least one sure enough.
I just have one thing. Jeremy, I'd really appreciate it if when you do that, the, the fee we do, that I agree with Kevin and Jim and Helen, all commissioners, that the biggest problem we have, we don't, we, I've seen it. The violations don't have a penalty commensurate with the violation. And I would much rather see the violation be more costly than the permit fees. Let's try to get the permit fees down, maybe the violations up and try to reverse that scenario. I mean, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
I'll make a note of that. I'll give it to the project manager.
I think you would probably find universal agreement on that one.
One quick follow on, please. One of the public commenters shared a concern about the vastly different uses of terminology from exceptional, legacy, old growth, et cetera. I see legacy as a defined term in here. Strangely defined, but nevertheless defined. Is there, does that commenter have merit? Is there anything we can do in that regard to improve things?
So one of the, one of the pieces that influences that is within our own code, we already have a stipulation for significant trees. So significant trees is something that a lot of the other jurisdictions are using, but Public Works has already got it for using trees that are over twenty forty B H, but only in the right of way. And so if I use that term significant trees, then there, there allows some room for misinterpretation. And so calling them ecologically significant trees does help us to make that more specific to all areas. Specific to more, more inclusive of all areas, excuse me. And so that is one, one piece. You know, I thought about talking to Public Works and saying, can we call them something different? Can we call them right away trees or, you know, something else? And so that is possible, you know, asking another department to change their code is kind of heavy handed. But, you know, it is, it is within, you know, working together to make this workable for everybody. With, with regard to legacy trees versus exceptional trees, I've heard all the gamut from please call them legacy trees, please call them exceptional trees. And so unless we're all on the same page about what those should be called, then it really is, you know, at our discretion, so.
But what we could do is at least take a look at North County, North Counties and North County codes. North County cities. And see just what their nomenclature is, so you could at least look across the board. That would give you some.
All right, well, we're coming to a point of business that we need to consider and that is whether or not we're ready to schedule and hopefully hold a public hearing on forced conversion ordinance for July nineteenth of this year. And if we are, I would certainly entertain a motion on that.
If you feel like there's significant enough information you need for me to come back with, with regards to the questions you had, I'm happy to come back.
We'll still ask you all that stuff in the next work session. All that stuff, so we still want to address it all, but we also want to hear from the public.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah.
Checking in on that.
Yeah, no, this, this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination, but we do want to hear from the public. They're, they're an important part of this too.
The only problem I see, when you have a hearing after which you can't get any more public input.
Not at this level, but they still get to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they still get to talk to the board.
The board.
Yeah.
We have had extensive outreach and we have had already people coming to us with, with comments.
Yeah, we had quite a few tonight, that was good.
Yeah, that's good. More engagement than I was, we would, but so if you, well, we could put this to a vote if somebody wanted to make a motion. I don't know if you have example language still or if your battery died or not.
My battery died, but if you don't mind, thank you, Tasha. Oh, yes. Say.
Anybody?
What are we going to do with this? There you go. All right, I'll fill in. Okay, so I would move to set a public hearing on a twenty five forest land conversion ordinance and review rural tree protections for July nineteenth of twenty twenty three.
That's second.
It's been moved and seconded to set a public hearing on a twenty five forest land conversion ordinance and review rural tree protections on July nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Is there any other discussion? We'll call for that vote.
Hi. Hi.
Mr. Day.
Hi.
Sheriff Casino.
Hi.
Sheriff Simmons.
Hi.
Sheriff Haller.
Hi. That motion passes and so we will have our public hearing on July nineteenth of twenty twenty three. Thank you very much, thank you very much, Dana. This is a, there's a lot going on here.
Two thousand nine.
Yeah. All right, well, let's, uh.
I was on the summer planning commission for six years and their tree ordinance started before I got there and was not finished by the time I left. So.
We're going to move on to.
I guess they won an award, so that's great.
We're going to move on to some staff updates with manager, interim planning manager Jeremy Davis.
All right, so first off, on June fourteenth, we're holding a second briefing on the shoreline management plan. This is a post-public hearing briefing, so Andy's going to go more into some of the comments we received at the public hearing and some of the higher level issues that we have on Backers and such. And then also back on May twenty seventh, community planning staff attended the Dia de Familia at Ambosillo. It had over three hundred people attending. They had, we reached a hundred and five different individuals on that. And we actually had ten surveys completed on Thursday, twenty forty five. And this was our education outreach specialist, Miriam Velasquez, who went to this event. We did have materials translated into Spanish for the event and had an interpreter on the site to help us gather public input. This was done as part of our partnership and Thurston County Stream Team, which is a partnership between Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater and Thurston County on stormwater side. We use that as a method to get out more information on that comprehensive plan. And that's all I got on it.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to everybody look at their calendars. On June twenty first, we are going to have a couple of public hearings, one on the long term ag zoning and one on the Pogue site specific land use and zoning amendment. So with that public hearing, I hope everybody can be here, but is there, is there anybody that's expecting they might not?
I might not.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson might not make that. Okay, and then on July fifth, we'll have our fourth work session on long term ag zoning after our public hearing. Which should be a pretty good discussion, so hopefully everybody can make that one. Is there anybody that's expecting to, Commissioner Halverson? That's terrible. Jealous.
Talk about fireworks.
All right, I'm hoping that everybody is able to make that. I also want to make the reminder that on July tenth, we're doing the, the next Yell Joint Plan Special Meeting and we're going to hold that starting at six forty five P M here. And then we're going to have our public hearing at seven P M that night, I believe. So everybody show up at six forty five, I think we'll have a small introduction or something like that and then we can work into our public hearing. So is there anybody that's not expecting to make that July tenth special meeting, other than Mr. Yellowstone?
I have a word meeting conflict.
I have a work meeting conflict, but.
Okay. All right, well, with that, we're gonna move on to our next two things, and I wish we had a lot more time. I'm not terribly concerned about getting home as early as possible, so I don't want to shortchange this too much. But I do want to get everything so that it needs to be said, and we can work on some other stuff, too. Firstly, let's do, um, a subcommittee report from Commissioner Pestinger and maybe take some action on that subcommittee report. If you want to run that, Commissioner Pestinger?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so I believe that everyone received, uh, the notes from our meeting, uh, which included a lot of our discussion and some recommendations. Uh, we've tried to keep the recommendations fairly broad. Um, we had two meetings, and, uh, committee was made up of myself and Commissioner Day and Wheatley. Uh, we felt that the most, uh, noticeable things that we could recommend had to do with, elements tied to some of the new legislation that came out, uh, around what needs to be included in a new version of a comprehensive plan. I think, I think in terms of public outreach, there was a lot of concern about the, um, doing it the same old way. But there had been a lot of historical practices that kind of brought us to where we are currently, and that's, legislation was specifically referencing it's time to do it better. Uh, what's been done before hasn't been working, and that we have an opportunity to improve that. Um, and mostly had to do with the outreach towards groups that are either, uh, underrepresented or marginalized or negatively impacted by planning decisions. And it had a broad range of impacts, whether it had to do with housing, whether it had to do with job, whether it had to do with health, whether it had to do with available resources, uh, accessibility, public transport, et cetera. Um, so there's a broad range of impacts that I think could easily be communicated to a large portion of the public, um, and that we need to try new and, and innovative ways. Thrilled to hear about the outreach that was done with C E L O. That's a great step in that direction. Um, so things like that, that we can come up with, that are better ways. I don't know if we had specific recommendations that we want to ask to be adopted, or, uh, maybe the other members of the committee can chime in on that topic.
Well, I mean, I, I think we did talk pretty extensively about, um, the I A P.
Yeah, that's a great point. For those that are not familiar, the public, uh, participation, um, the International Association of Public Participation, I believe. Uh, and they've got excellent guidelines, um, and a framework that they recommend, and we would suggest that that would be a, a great starting point for adopting that as a methodology.
Commissioner Day, did you have anything on the subcommittee?
Um, I could just pretty briefly just run through the high level, because I don't know what kind of action we would want to take as a body. That'd be my primary question.
Okay.
So. And then, yeah. And on that.
Um, I mean, we're obviously an advisory board, so, so we can ask either staff or the board to implement any of your recommendations or, uh, go a certain direction, but, uh, I think that would have to be a fairly specific ask, so it's not too, it, so it's actually actionable.
Yeah, and I think we, we did write what was intended to be actionable, um, into our, uh, into the, I guess, the subcommittee recommendations. Um, I don't know if all of those are tolerable to folks, uh, if we would want to.
Yeah, we're curious to hear from the rest of the commission.
I think that was, yeah.
I didn't have any heartburn over anything in your report, and I thought there was a lot of good stuff in there, so if, I'm not sure how to implement any of that. I mean, if, if the, there was a motion made to have staff consider this report to fit into their work plan, I think that's a pretty reasonable thing. I don't know, I mean, we obviously cannot dictate work plan to staff. But if as a commission, we wanted staff to take that report, that subcommittee report seriously and, and fit in as much of that as they could, that's certainly a recommendation we could make.
That's for them.
That makes sense.
Well, if somebody would like to make that motion, and then we could forward that, and you guys can.
Can I get away with so moved?
So, so moved, is it seconded?
Second.
So the motion is to forward a recommendation to staff and possibly the Board of County Commissioners to look over the subcommittee report and take those items into consideration into their work plan.
I think the recommendations.
Recommendations to their work plan. Is, is that an understandable motion?
That's understandable motion, yeah. I read through the subcommittee report. We actually do some of this already, and we work with TRPC, like, the data and stuff like that already.
All right, with that, we'll call for the vote.
Hi.
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 Thank you, that motion passes. Now, I wanted to get to, hopefully, our last item here. On June twenty first at nine A M. is the, the B O C C is going to entertain us with a meeting to talk about what we want to talk about. And at the last meeting, we talked about how we're gonna have some ideas on what we're gonna bring, because since we requested the meeting, we should really have the, at least some input on what we want to talk to them about, because they don't know, so we should tell them.
Um, just from the staff side of it, we're gonna be turning in a briefing report to them, and so we would really like to include bullets on that briefing report with what you'd like to talk to them about, so they have an idea too.
Like stuff for the briefing report.
Yes. Don't want to just go in there flat footage, so.
Your date and time.
It's, uh, June twenty first at nine A M. Uh, I should ask, I know that Commissioner Wheatley possibly won't be able to make it, but is everybody else thinking that they will go to that?
I can't make it. It's Wednesday.
Mr. Yellowstone.
No, I'm, I, I won't be a Yellowstone then, but I have another commitment that I gotta do before I go.
Okay, so Commissioner Wheatley and Commissioner Halverson will not be there. I'm hoping that, uh, everybody else can be there. I know there's day job problems.
It'll be on my calendar.
And, uh, what's that?
Where is it physically?
Here.
I'm repeating, my, um, Tasha can also send out an email to do a final tally before we go in. We want to make sure we have any special meeting notices published beforehand, so.
Yeah, I think the chances of us not having a quorum are pretty low, but you'll need to know that for sure.
Yeah.
But, okay, so with that, let's talk about some of the bullet points that we would like to talk to the board about, so, uh, staff can put together a memo. Anybody want to lead off on what they'd like to do, other than, I mean, obviously, the first thing would be the recommendations that are in the subcommittee report. Those will probably want to be talked about.
I recall conversations about, um, opening up all the different parts of the, of the comprehensive plan and, and having a chance to, um, look at all the, look at, look at the plan its entirety, um, rather than deciding scope ahead of the process. And I understand it's a resource issue, but, um, I think Scott made some pretty compelling points about waiting around for years and years and years to finally get to the point that we could look at these things and, and we, we want everything on the table.
I think that one of those ideas there boils down to having enough resourcing for the planning commission to do all the work it wants to do, which means adding to your budget one way or another. Yeah.
That's possible, yes.
I, I do think that, um, uh, after tonight's meeting, there will probably be some input from the planning commissioners to you, and if you would, on what should be on this agenda, and if you could also send those back out to the planning commission when they come into you, that would be great. Because I think some of the people that won't be there will have some ideas on what they'd like.
So send them all to Tasha directly.
Send them all to Tasha.
Send them all to Tasha directly. Please don't send them to each other, just to Tasha. Uh, once we get all of your topics, we'll get with you, Sheriff Casino, probably before we submit the briefing report.
Okay.
Uh, I think that's probably a good way to do it, so that way we're not engaging with the whole planning commission outside of the meeting.
Yeah, so. How, how much time is our, is it a one-hour meeting?
Let me look it up while you guys keep on talking.
Do we have another bullet point to talk to the B O C C about?
Well, I guess I have a.
Tell us your concern.
A spot or a, well, it's a, it's a kind of a process thing. It's, you know, it's, it's considered, um, I mean, like, when I became a planning commissioner, um, I did the, like, really started the online training stuff. And, you know, one of the first things that they tell you in the very first hour of the training is that you meet regularly, you know, with, um, the commissioners, because it's the commissioners that we're here to support. And, um, and so I would like to know how we can work out a process of communication with, direct communication with the commissioners, so that we, as a planning commission, can be sure that we're serving their needs and what they're intending for us. And I know we've had this, you know, we had a conversation about a year ago, there, I know there are differences of opinion on the planning commission itself about what that relationship should be, but I would like to hear from the commissioners. What they're thinking is about the process of our, you know, our relationship with them and how we do that. And whether it wouldn't be a good idea to develop, um, uh, something programmatic, systematic.
I think that's a good question.
Yeah, and especially because over the years, you know, the, the board has changed, and so we have had different direction and sometimes no direction now on whether or not they want us to consider independently what's going on, or if they want us to consider their goals and objectives while we're doing this, and how, how much independence do they want us in our deliberation? So I think that's an important thing for them to, uh, define. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, um, I had a meeting with Fisher Menzner recently, and something came up that I think is maybe at least tangentially related to this in that, um, when we moved to five commissioners, the planning commission is necessarily going to have to change in the way that it's, um, constructed.
For reappointments, yeah.
For, yeah.
For open appointments.
They're, um, they're looking at a number of different options, including making everyone reapply, um, at that time, because we'll all live in different, well, some of us will live in different districts than we do now. And, uh, and so it may be worth having a conversation with them about where they are, so that we just know what to expect, or at least can maybe as, be as informed as possible.
I, I think that there are a lot of conversations about what's going forward. One of, I, I, I don't think that there's going to be anything that would remove a current commissioner before their term is up, because that's actually a, there's state law.
Yeah.
Protects commissioners from that kind of thing, since we are essentially public oversight. We're the highest form of public oversight of county government. So I don't think that's gonna be a real question. I think the county, and I don't know this, the county probably doesn't want to go there, because that's a whole new bag of worms to tell a commissioner, you're done, even though your term's not expired. But in the future, as appointments come up, as vacancies come up, how they're gonna do that, I have no idea, and I know there's a lot of talk about that. And I don't think that, the conversations that I've had with them, I don't think that they're even going to have that plan formalized until later this summer or maybe fall. But I do know that it's on their mind.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe Jeremy can speak to that a little bit, but I know it's not the highest priority, because we're still six months away. And right now, we only have one vacancy, and that would still come under the old rules, and a particular vacancy, that term expires at the end of the year anyways, so it's not a huge issue, but there.
Well, like, Scott and I will be in District Four, um, after the end of the year, and so.
State law doesn't, yeah, but state law doesn't care which district you live in after the initial appointments from.
Okay.
From G M A.
Okay.
So the at-large thing is kind of on the table.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was hearing, too.
And I know the Board of County Commissioners office is taking a comprehensive look at all of our boards and commissions and how they're appointed to make sure that we adjust them properly for the five, um, member Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah.
That I do know.
Yeah, on that note, could you have something, Commissioner?
I was just gonna say, one commissioner is only gonna be elected for one year, another one for two years before they get reelected or not.
Yeah.
Anyway. So it's, there, there's gonna be a continuous rollover flow. I mean, that's what I've got from.
Yeah, and our, and the planning commission needs to be on a regular cycle, too. Right now, it's a little haphazard, and there needs to be a little bit of math that's yeah, backtracked in, so we can figure out what the new terms, are they, are they appointment terms or are they full terms?
Yeah.
And so they're gonna have to figure all that out.
That's interesting. You could have a commissioner elected for one year, served for one year, but appoint people for six.
Right, so that's why they, they don't, they don't know what's gonna happen yet.
Public oversight, too, is that you don't bring your people with you when you're elected. Those people are already there.
Right.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
Uh, does anybody have anything else that we want to prep the staff for, for our journey into B O C C land?
Well, this is just one hour.
It's, um, I just looked at it. Nine to ten thirty in the morning. Also, we've got an hour and a half, got a pretty significant amount of time with the board, actually. Uh, they usually do half-hour briefings, so.
Yeah, if anybody has any other ideas, please get them to Tasha as quick as you can. Go ahead.
There was some discussion, one we've already mentioned, which was the budget. And simply asking, have we asked for enough budget? Because there seems to be this recurring theme of staff says we don't have enough budget, but, um, we're not sure that we asked the county commissioners for enough. Um, so those type of budgeting questions and related, um, was the topic of simply, how does the planning commission ideally relate and work with staff? How does, what's the process on a recurring basis of sort of, I mean, I've asked for a templated process that we follow each time for each thing, um, which has an element of, you know, scoping and element of, of, uh, definition of, of, uh, what our constraints are, and then research, and then we get into public comment, and then we get into debate and discussion and coming up with solutions. Whether that's something that the county commissioners have an opinion on or not, I think we're interested in.
On the budget, are you referring to, um, whether the plant, the, the planning commission currently doesn't have a separate, like, a line item?
Yeah, I'm referring both to projects such as the, the master, or the, the comprehensive plan, um, and budget for specific elements of things that we thought were important to be worked on there, uh, but also potentially for planning commission itself, budgeting, uh, or at least discretion over requests we can make.
Because it, because, I mean, because this is, this is something that, um, confused me when I, I mean, there's, there's language, there's ambiguous language about, um, the planning, what is the term, conjointly?
Yeah.
There's, there's a lot of ambiguity in, in what that relationship is because of this word. I think it's conjoint, can, working conjointly. And, and my question about that when I came on was, well, how do we work if we don't have a budget? Um, how do we do some of the things that, um, planning commissioners, planning commissions under the, under the statute are supposed to be able to do, like, research? Um, you know, the research is through staff, but we don't have a particular staff, staffing budget, nor do we have a research budget, uh, because I found out we just don't exist in the budget as a, as a commission, so.
Do you feel like that the planning commission, uh, cannot do work outside of staff's scope of work that was assigned to them by the B O C C? So if we want to look at something that is not part of their scope of work, we don't have the ability to do that.
Right, and it seems like under the statute, that's something that we're supposed to do or have the power or the ability or.
So, I'm sorry, which statute?
Exactly.
Which statute you're.
The state, the, the state.
So there's two planning enabling laws that counties can operate under in Washington State. There's thirty-six seventy, which is what most counties operate under, and thirty-five sixty-three. We operate under thirty-five sixty-three. So that means the county, the planning commission and also staff work on projects as assigned by the Board of County Commissioners. So it's a little bit different statute than thirty-six seventy.
So what is that? So, yeah, I would just like an understanding of what, what the commission thinks that means and what it means for how we do our work.
Um, this makes me think that, that a little bit of, um, discussion around, uh, kind of to you, maybe to your point, um, how the planning commission communicates with the Board of County Commissioners. And, and currently, as I see it, most of our communication goes through staff, and sometimes that could be, put staff in a really.
goes through staff. And sometimes that could be put staff in a really difficult position. And so if we, maybe it exists, but it if I understood that there was a more formal process of communicating directly with the commission as a as a body, that that sometimes it was through staff and other times maybe it wasn't. But I think I would I would benefit from a discussion around how how maybe that could could happen, because I think staff can end up in a really difficult position if they're if they're always kind of stuck in the middle. And and sometimes, you know, a direct line of communication might be best.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would be facilitated outside of individual commissioners going to board meetings and.
Or scheduling more regular meetings like the one coming up. I don't know.
Yeah, getting invited to address the board is, they kind of they have a tight schedule.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
I will say that one of the key pieces of communication that you do have are your letters of recommendation to the board on individual code amendments or comp plan updates. So structuring those, if you want to make findings and attach those findings to those letters of recommendation, that's part of your communication to the board on how you feel or what you believe or what supports what you put forward. So.
Yep, I do know that's true, because there's been plenty of times I've been in a board briefing where what we what we recommended did not have why we recommended in it, and the board has been, well, why, why did they think this?
Okay.
Yeah.
And the planning commission can choose to adopt findings when you adopt make recommendations. That has been done in the past. You can also ask staff assistants on putting those findings together. I've certainly done that for planning commission in the past, so.
Yeah.
I I guess I'd be a little bit concerned with that if if we're doing it individually, because we might get a whole nine different kind of thoughts on.
I would think that packet would have to be approved by the.
We'd have to all.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
And that's one reason why I was saying that the letter of recommendation you make to the board is your communication on many of these items. Doing so individually means it's that individual's opinion when you're going forward, saying that out loud, which is what it sounds like the PC members are saying. So, yeah, that's really important. That letter speaks to the board on what you're thinking and why you're thinking that.
Fair enough. And on that question of, like, we could ask staff to help prepare that, that feels like a resource drain bit of one that would add.
Staff regularly develops findings. Anytime we do an ordinance or resolution, the recitals inside of that ordinance resolution are essentially findings that we put together for that item. That certainly is something, yeah, the whereas's, those are the recitals and the ordinance. The ordinance may also be set up to put those as one, two, three, four. I mean, there's different structures in there, but those are all essentially findings. So planners are generally trained on how to do those, and should be able to put those together fairly quickly. There are usually some very matter-of-fact ones we can put together ahead of time, like the dates the planning commission met, any C P, anything like that. But if you have specific ideas that you're thinking of for those findings, informing staff without a meeting ahead of time, letting us know what you want to see in those findings, and then we can bring them back to you for consideration at a future meeting. I mean, it's all possible.
And this is for me from staff is is like I very seldom see those findings, and I would like to see those.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't, yeah.
And if the planning commission wants to make findings with your recommendation to the board, we can certainly try to work that in our work program, and you can see them, review them, and see if you agree with them, strike them, keep them, so on. So.
What you're asking about, Mr. Davis, is you taking the AIS and providing us a copy of that.
Not quite like that. It would end up being a letter with the findings attached to it.
It will slow down everything we do by at least one.
Yeah, that's the thing. It does slow it down a little bit.
Yeah.
So I've also done very similar things in other jurisdictions, and you essentially like, and I'm just thinking about the ag zoning update. We've gone through multiple work sessions together. Scott have a sense of, you know, what those findings are and what the discussion is that is leading to, you know, that final recommendation. It seemed that should be able to come with the last.
Yeah.
Packet.
Yeah.
And so to try not to slow it down, if it ends up slowing it down, that's fine. But, you know, we should be able to preemptively populate it with a draft that you can then work through as part of your.
I've done that before, too.
Yeah.
In answer to Commissioner Simmons' question of he's never seen those before, and just as a matter of information with the packet that we get sent out, Tasha, on anything that's going up to for a briefing to the commissioners, that would be a good thing to include to the planning commissioners, so they can see it. And I've seen a lot of AISs as a different aspect, not from the planning commission aspect.
Anybody have anything else on this particular topic? Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? This meeting's gone pretty long, but with having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Where are you going, Jerry? Where are you going?
I'm not going anywhere. I've got two jobs right now, so.